Let me.
It may not look it.
Let me call the, this November 3rd, meeting the order of the New Market School Board by reading our mission statement for those of us in the room and the public. The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance here?
Please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, James. And let me welcome the public here tonight, and if you have any comments on our agenda items, now's a good time to start, but we'll also, I'm sure, have some interaction as we go through the agenda. So, anything particularly you want to start off with? Great. Thank you so much. Let me move on to the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th school board meeting.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As usual, they're excellent.
Okay. We have a number of things under correspondence here tonight.
Non-public minutes, Jonathan.
Oh, sorry, forgot about our non-public minutes. Can I get a motion to...
Approve those?
Approve those?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just noticed the date was wrong.
You noticed that the date was wrong? Well, that's always helpful. Let me take a second look at that.
Thank you, Susan. Missed that.
It says 22nd.
Ah-huh. Okay. Can I get a motion to, well...
Approve.
Approve...
As amended.
As amended with the day change on it?
I'll second that also.
Okay. All in favor of approving these minutes as amended?
Aye.
Thank you.
Correspondence. Let's start off with, we have a couple of things in correspondence. We have a congrats from Kristin Kiefer, James Fabiano, regarding our virtual high school. And I think that it's one of those things that it might be worth reading into the record. So let me just go ahead and do that. And it's a congratulations, and it's from Ruth Adams, Dean of Curriculum and Instructions at the Virtual High School. Hi, Kristin, I've been away for a week presenting in Denver at the Virtual School Symposium, but just heard that your students had exemplary results on the AP Physics C exam. One hundred percent scoring, a four or five on the exam. That is the best cumulative result on any of the AP courses that VHS offers. You should be very proud of this. You're a dedicated and highly qualified teacher, and we at Virtual High School are so proud to have you as a member of the VHS Collaborative. Any chance you may be willing to present at a national conference, all expenses paid by VHS, on how to create an online science lab course that leads to universal success in online students? We are also proud of you and your students. We will be happy to contact your administration to inform them of the gem they have in you. Please accept our congratulations, and please let us know if there's anything that we can do to further promote your extraordinary success. Sincerely, Ruth Adams, Dean of Curriculum and Instruction, Virtual High School, Inc., Maynard, Massachusetts. Congrats, Kristin.
That's fantastic.
Well done. An extraordinary teacher, I think you know that, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Both Mrs. Brooks and I would support her attendance at a national conference, not only representing Virtual High School, but representing New Market Junior Senior High School. I've also asked Kristin to present to you in December, make a presentation similar to the ones that we've been having from the departments, to present her AP Physics class to you and to give you another look at what she does. I know she was here last year and did an overview of the Virtual High School program, but I thought it would be particularly interesting to see what she actually does with her physics class. And I know that you heard last week from Mr. Fabiano that the goal in the science is to have our students, as we have ratcheted up the science expectations at the high school, to have our students more involved in her program. So, we're very excited about this.
That's great news. Congrats again.
Chris. I actually had something under correspondence as well. I don't know if you've all seen the recent editorial in one of the local newspapers that talked about the AYP. And it was a bit confusing to me. It spoke specifically to New Market's results, and I was wondering if you could maybe clarify a little bit. Did you see that editorial?
Yes, this week there was an editorial in the Exeter Newsletter, and the editorial was speaking about schools that did not make annual yearly progress. And as you know, our high school, New Market High School, did make annual yearly progress. And the editorial sort of indicated that it wasn't as, it wasn't as a significant event to make AYP because we did not have subgroups. And you understand that whole subgroup bit. You must have 11 students in a subgroup. Subgroups are made up of special education, low income, English as a second language students. I think that's it. And so, you have to have 11 students in any of those groups to be counted as a group, and if that group does not make AYP, then the whole school does not make AYP. The assumption was is that New Market did not have enough students in those groups, but the information that the newspaper had was incorrect. In fact, New Market had two groups, two subgroups, both enough students in the special education subgroup, students receiving special education services, as well as enough students who are considered in low income. So, both of those groups made AYP, and in addition to that, the entire school made it. So there was some misinformation, it was inaccurate, and I discussed that situation with the administrators this week at our monthly leadership meeting. And the administrators have encouraged me to contact the newspaper and clarify the information so that it was accurate. But again, I can't tell you how pleased I am, the work that has been put in by our teachers, the effort that our students put forth when asked to do their very best and to represent their school and their district, they did it. And we're very proud of them. For two years now, they have made AYP, and quite frankly, I'm confident, and Mrs. Brooks is confident, that we will continue to make AYP. But you, as you know, there is a ceiling, and it gets more rigorous as the years pass, so.
Well, that average yearly progress, which is what AYP stands for, for those of you folks at home, is something in relation to the No Child Left Behind legislation, and we're really pleased to be one of the few schools in the area that's been fortunate enough to go there, and also very proud of our teachers and students. And thanks for clarifying.
We'll follow up with the...
Yeah, with the local newspaper.
Was there a point to it, or was it just another, did it just feel like bashing the New Market school system?
No, it really wasn't.
It was just a paragraph.
The focus wasn't on New Market. The focus was on two other school districts that did not make it. And I think the newspaper was trying to take a position that, you know, there's a lot of things that go into the AYP. It isn't just about the student body in general making it. It includes other things. It includes attendance at school, which is, I think it's eighty, ninety percent attendance, of course you know our attendance rate is ninety-six. There's also graduation rate. You must have at least seventy-five percent of your students graduate. Our graduation rate is eighty-five percent, so we were clearly within that range, along with achievement. So, I think the newspaper was trying to say that even though these two districts didn't make it, there's a lot of factors that go into it. And they used New Market, but they had their information wrong.
Do you have help?
That's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. In terms of other correspondence, we have in the mail our certificate of membership to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, which showed up. And I actually, yesterday, got a call from Ted Comstock, their executive director, regarding this weekend's meeting, and he wanted to clarify, we have a resolution that will go before the school boards' assembly, very similar to the one that was received unanimously last year, only the one that's showing up on Saturday, Kristin, this is to kind of give you a little heads up on that, will not be recommended by the school boards, because they liked our idea so much, they incorporated it elsewhere in some other things that they were doing. And Ted called me personally to, you know, give me a little heads up on that, and hope that there were no hard feelings. And I assured him that the school board was really pleased to have our concern regarding the rising cost of health insurance for people who work in the schools in New Hampshire be brought to the attention of the legislature in a forceful kind of way, that those costs are kind of out of control, and we really need to be addressing those. And he was very supportive of that, and I just wanted you guys to know, I appreciated the call, and told them that you would be catching up with him on Saturday and moving things along. Okay, on a separate note, Scott, we have Scott Thompson here tonight. I'm going to ask you, under correspondence, to talk about the playground proposal in relation to the PTA?
Yes, thank you.
Super.
Sorry, guys.
There's always a little jockeying for position on the agenda here. But we're moving right along here tonight.
Okay.
I need photocopies, and they're not very good. So I'll pass around the original as well.
The elementary PTA has worked, as you know, for many years to buy playground equipment for the elementary school playground. The last installment is the kindergarten area, which is fenced off separately. Currently, we have a wooden playground structure with kind of a tower and steps going up, slides going down. All of the rest of the playground is with safely coated metal structures with manufactured shavings to protect the kids underneath, and, you know, heavy-duty plastic durable kind of things. Last March, though I was not involved in the PTA, but judging from the design date on the bottom, this design was chosen by the PTA for the next installment, as I said, which is the kindergarten section. They just completed, as of last night, tallying up or presenting the results of the current fundraiser. And the PTA made, entered the year with about $5,000 in the budget, but made more than $16,000 in this fundraiser. So, they felt there was enough money to go ahead and order that. The discussion was that if the school board approved of this concept for adding to your property, that they could order it tomorrow, and it could be installed by the end of the calendar year. So, that's why we wanted to kind of rush it through, if that's possible.
This looks great. I mean, it's a wonderful structure. I'm so pleased they've done so well with fundraising, and I think the kids in the kindergarten, you know, will be real excited about this. Any questions for Scott about this?
I'm just a little bit curious. There's that one main kind of traditional slide, but there's another, looks like kind of a textured slide.
In that one? That's actually an up, yeah, an up, you know, climbing up thing as opposed to stairs.
A crawling sort of...
Yeah, that's right. So it's like rock climbing for kindergarten. So, you know, it's not vertical, it's a forty-five, and it's only, I don't know, three or four feet long, and it's a safe, plasticized rock climbing. I'd say it's just a climbing piece, not a slide down. But there are, it looks like two double slides, so I'm thinking we can get a lot more kids down more quickly. Plus, as you see, they're replacing the swings that are there. Well, it is an issue, because we have three kindergartens out at once, so, you know, I hear sometimes the kids have to wait, and it gets a little tough when they only have twenty minutes, so we want them up and down many times as possible.
Burn off a little of that energy.
That's right, yeah.
Scott, the playground, is it going to be carpeted, or is that going to be, what is going to be on the base of it?
It's going to be the same manufactured wood chips that we have on the rest of the playground. And this year, every year we have to upgrade those. When we ordered a hundred cubic yards, we had them put a third of them under the most, you know, the highest and the most likely structures where somebody could fall and get hurt, in the playground area, we put a third of it there. And the other two thirds, you have to raise up to the place there's a label on the equipment, that shows it's deep enough. So every year it gets tamped down, you have to add a little more.
You know, there is a synthetic out there for playgrounds.
Well, this is a, it's wood, but the stuff we use, it's manufactured, it's not like regular mulch.
You don't replace that every year, like?
Yes, you do, you have to replace it because it gets tamped down from the kids running on it and that kind of thing. So, I think the first year, I looked up, and they had ordered three hundred cubic yards, which would be three big truckloads full. This year, we added a hundred cubic yards just to raise the level, and we only had to use about maybe sixty-five or so cubic yards in the main part of the playground. The rest, we put in the kindergarten area, under the swings and the highest structures. So if anyone did fall, they'd have a good cushion. But the other thing is, the PTA is buying another truckload, because in order to get the whole area in the kindergarten wing, if you will, up to snuff, we need, they predict, a hundred cubic yards. That seemed like a lot, but I actually measured it, and that's, you know, like nine inches deep over the whole thing. Goes pretty quickly, so.
Well, I think this probably calls for a motion to accept with significant gratitude on the part of the school board, the PTA's generous donation of this structure. What do you guys, can we get one of those?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thanks again to the PTA for us.
Oh, the spaghetti supper?
Yeah, how was it?
Well, I made the mistake of not buying a ticket in advance. I thought, well, I'll get one that night. So, there I was at the end of the line. I've never seen such a long lunch line. It was really great. But I did get to meet a lot of parents, and that was really fun. It was very well attended. The highest price for a cake at the auction that I heard was somewhere in the range of a hundred dollars, but it may have been higher, because I didn't hear the final cost for the cake, which, as I understand it, included Red Sox tickets. So that one may have gone opening day, and that may have gone for a lot, and I missed the amount, so.
Yeah, that's kind of been a regular thing at that spaghetti supper. And if you had asked any of the school board members, they would have told you to get the tickets in advance. We've learned over the years, that line is brutal.
I learned something tonight, so. It was great, but wonderful turnout.
Great.
That's good to hear.
All righty.
Thanks again, Scott.
Thank you. And may I have the original back so I can...
Okay, thank you. Well, any other correspondence that others have that we need to know about before we move on to programs? Okay. All right. You're on.
My name is Arthur Prue, and I'm the math chair at New Market Junior Senior High School. This is Dan Kutcher, who is presently the eighth grade math teacher. And we're delighted to be here, and we want to thank you all for inviting us. Been looking forward to this.
Thank you so much, Dan. My daughter still waves about.
If you'll just quickly look in your folder, we have our agenda, it may not come to pass completely. Then, I wrote a little paper, The Evolution of Mathematics Education, followed by Guiding Principles of How Children Learn Mathematics. After that, there is more. Does yours say that was the year that was? It does. Okay, well, that will come into play in a while. That's from Tom Lehrer, we'll tell you that in a second. After that is sort of an interesting overview that I found online of how students learn from kindergarten on through. It also numerates the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics curriculum standards that have pretty much created the state standards all throughout the United States. And it's a good overview and good outline. And then after that, you'll see, this is the curriculum at a place at Davenport West High School in Davenport, Iowa. Then there's one also that's in a very affluent area in upstate New York, Sutherland High School, and that's from Pittsburgh, New York. And then finally, there's also one that is a parochial school in Louisiana. It just shows the types of course offerings, and we'll go through those in a minute. And then you have the GSEs, or the new types of indicators that are going to be on the new assessment, starting in, I believe it's the fall, it's end of nineteen, excuse me, 2006. And, just almost through with this, then the last part is an interesting part. There's, this is something called Misunderstood Minds, it was on PBS, and it's an interesting program in terms of how people learn mathematics, and in particular, it focuses on students with math difficulties, different learning disabilities. So it's really very good. I'm going to try to get the video of that also, maybe I could bring it here, or give it to you sometime so you can look at. It's really interesting. But we'll start first with the agenda, so I'd like to just comment first in a very cursory way on the state of math education. Most of you are quite a bit younger than I was. I remember fearing going to school in kindergarten, fearing going to school in first grade, and I had good reason to. I mean, you got there, it was very, very boring. All you did was do paperwork, all you did was memorize, it was a lot of drill and a lot of rote, and it really wasn't very much fun. And that, I guess, was okay. Then you got to middle school, it was sort of more of the same, because it was junior high school back then. And then, once you got to high school, you had choices, you might have taken, you could take perhaps one or two, or maybe three types of algebra, geometry, and a lot of people took none of those, they simply took a very basic math. And everything was sort of idyllic until 1957, when Sputnik was launched, and I remember the terror that reigned, because everyone felt that we were falling in the race with the Soviet Union. And after that, we said, everyone said, well, we have to ratchet up the curriculum. So there were a lot of reforms, but perhaps the most infamous of all the reforms was in the early 1960s, something called the New Math. And I'm not sure if you all recall that or not. But it was, yeah, it was dealing with different number bases, rather than dealing with the way we normally, we really learn, which is starting with very specific exponential types of information, and then becoming more and more abstract and generalized. Some people decided, well, these were pretty much academics, decided, let's start at the general level. If they can handle that, they can handle everything down below. Well, it didn't really work out that way. And in fact, there's a, I don't know if you've ever heard of Tom Lehrer. In 1965, he compiled this volume, and on it was one of the songs that he wrote, and he sings, it's called "The New Math." So, Dan's going to play it for us. Sure.
Some of you who have small children may have perhaps been put in the embarrassing position of being unable to do your child's arithmetic homework because of the current revolution in mathematics teaching known as the New Math. So as a public service here tonight, I thought I would offer a brief lesson in the New Math tonight. We're going to cover subtraction. This is the first room I've worked for a while, it didn't have a blackboard, so we will have to make do with more primitive visual aids, as they say in the Edsils. Consider the following subtraction problem. Try it up here. Three hundred and forty-two minus one hundred and seventy-three. Now, remember how we used to do that. Three from two is nine, carry the one, and if you're under thirty-five or went to a private school, you say seven from three is six, but if you're over thirty-five and went to a public school, you say eight from four is six. Carry the ones, we have one hundred and sixty-nine, but in the new approach, as you know, the important thing is to understand what you're doing, rather than to get the right answer. Here's how they do it now. You can't take three from two, two is less than three, so you look at the four in the tens place. Now that's really four tens, so you make a three tens, regroup, and you change your tens to ten ones, and you add to the two and get twelve, and you take away three, that's nine. Is that clear? Now, instead of four in the tens place, you've got three, because you added one, that is to say ten to the two. But you can't take seven from three, so you look in the hundreds place. From the three, you then use one to make ten ones, and you know why? Four plus minus one plus ten is fourteen, minus one, because addition is commutative, right? And so you've got thirteen tens, and you take away seven, and that leaves five. Well, six, actually, but... The idea is the important thing. Now go back to the hundreds place, you're left with two, and you take away one from two, and that leaves... Everybody get one? Not bad for the first day. All right, for new math, here, new math. It won't do you a bit of good to read new math. It's so simple, so very simple. That only a child can do it. Now that actually is not the answer that I had in mind, because the book that I got this problem out of wants you to do it in base eight. But don't panic. Base eight is just like base ten, really. If you're missing two fingers. Shall we have a go at it? Hang on. You can't take three from two, two is less than three, so you look at the four in the eights place. Now that's really four eights, so you make a three eights, regroup, and you change an eight to eight ones, and you add to the two, and you get one, two, base eight, which is ten, base ten, and you take away three, that's seven. Okay? Now, instead of four in the eights place, you've got three, because you added one, that is to say eight to the two, but you can't take seven from three, so you look at the sixty-fours. Sixty-four. How did sixty-four get into it? I hear you cry. Well, sixty-four is eight squared, don't you see? I ask a silly question, you get a silly answer. From the three, you then use one to make eight ones, you add those ones to the three, and you get one, three, base eight, or in other words, in base ten, you have eleven, and you take away seven, and seven from eleven is four. Now go back to the sixty-fours, you're left with two, and you take away one from two, and that leaves... Now let's not always see the same hands. One, that's right. Whoever got one can stay after the show and clean the erasers. All right, for new math, here, new math. It won't do you a bit of good to read new math. It's so simple, so very simple, that only a child can do it. Come back tomorrow night, we're going to do fractions.
So, Tom Lehrer was a mathematician as well as an entertainer. He wrote a lot of his, all of his own songs that he performed. But I think it kind of exemplifies how confusing it was. That obviously didn't last very long, and was about as successful as the Edsils, and it kind of went the same way. So after that, there was a lot of muddling around, until 1989, when the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics wrote their seminal document, The Standards. And even that was not quite clear, so the way a lot of people interpreted it was in various ways, and one of the most common interpretations was, a teacher could not tell a student anything. If they were in groups, they could tell each other things, but a teacher couldn't do that, because it was based upon the idea of constructivism, where each of us constructs his or her own knowledge. So why that means you can't construct a knowledge if someone tells you something, wasn't really clear to me. And it wasn't clear to a lot of people. They also, was the emphasis on knowledge of facts, and it was sort of like what Tom Lehrer said, if you understood it, well, that's good enough, you know? And so, that, there was a lot of dissension over the standards. So what happened in nineteen, excuse me, the year 2000, is there was a second standards, which tried to clarify, and actually was more research-based than the first standards, along with a document from the National Research Council, which was called How Children Learn Mathematics. And so from those, what we have now is the guiding theory based upon research on how students learn math. And the basic idea is, it's not effective to teach rote in a rote ma- And the basic idea is, it's not effective to teach rote in a rote manner, it's effective to try to teach always with understanding whenever possible. It doesn't mean that you don't need to know a number of facts, but it's best to learn them in context, and it's best to address a child's pre-existing knowledge. I mean, if you tried to describe something in French III with me, I would be lost. You have to start and meet the child where he or she is, and that's a guiding principle, along with understanding. Because too many kids, you see too many students that I get at the high schools, simply say, I'm no good in math, I'm stupid, and they're very bright kids. And I think what happens is, when math is introduced in a mechanical way, saying, trust me, just do what I say without understanding, I think they see it themselves as failing, and they lose their self-confidence, and it follows them all the way through. So I think the whole movement toward understanding, as exemplified by Everyday Math, for example, the new program, I think is the way that, way of the future, and I think it's the way that students will actually gain in their understanding and their achievement. Now, if you looked at the curriculum that I just referred to earlier, there's nothing special, you don't necessarily have to look now, but I think you'll see that our curriculum is very consistent with theirs. There's not much of a difference from one to another, depending upon the types of schools. One thing we did notice, though, we've been having monthly curriculum meetings organized by Kathy, and Pat Valentine has come to run them, and they've been very effective in showing us things that we need to work on. And one glaring thing this time was, the scores in high school geometry were lower than the state average for the first time. And we thought about that, and we looked, and far less than half of our students had taken geometry by tenth grade when they took the test. And so one of the things, one of our goals is, is to have all students eventually take algebra by eighth or at least by ninth grade, so everyone will have taken geometry by ten, and you can, and everyone, hopefully, most kids who have the motivation will get at least through Algebra II by the time they graduate, because Algebra II now is a requirement for the SAT, excuse me, test. The other thing is, when we looked at what we have to do to redress some of those issues, is we're going to do something, we're going to look at our curriculum and finding areas in, before geometry, where geometry hasn't been covered as effectively as it should be, and we're trying to redress those. So that's one of the things we're doing right now. And I'm going to defer to Dan on that, so he's going to talk a little bit about curriculum mapping.
We've started doing, as an eighth grade team, some curriculum mapping over the last couple of years, and it has really helped. It's helped not only in one subject area, identify where you might have some gaps, but you've also been able to see where your subject lines up with another subject area. Couple examples might be where, in the science, in the eighth grade, they do a science fair at the end of the year, and it's been really good to see where the subjects line up. Like in math, we cover probability and statistics. And if we can cover that at the same time they're doing the science fair, it really helps out. So it not only helps with doing stuff within your subject area, but it also helps longitudinally, so you're able to see what's been covered before your class, and what's been expected of you in order to go on to the next course. So it's something that's been happening gradually, little by little. And this is easier to do in the middle school, because you see the same groups of kids. At eighth grade, you have, you know, core teachers who see the same kids. It's a little bit harder in the high school, because every teacher sees a different group of kids. So it makes it a little bit easier to coordinate those cross-curricular projects. I know we've set up for this year, four exhibitions, one per quarter. There's a cool stuff exhibition, which is going to be happening next Wednesday, which is our first. Second quarter, we plan on doing one on house and home, which covers all four subject areas. And the culture fair is the third quarter, and science fair would be fourth quarter. Some of the things that we've found with doing the curriculum mapping is, it is pretty time-consuming to start, especially that first time getting used to doing it, going through your own curriculum, pulling out everything you need to put into the software or to get it down on paper, so you need to know that you have that time set available. And also, if it's software, you know, managing through the software. And I know, as far as I'm concerned, it was a little uneasy putting your curriculum map together and putting it out there for others to see, and to know that, okay, this is a work in progress, and this is always going to be changing. So even though at the beginning of the year, when I say I'm going to be covering this in September, and this October, and this in November, that it might not always help happen like that, so, you know, I can't have, you know, it feels uncomfortable, because you might have somebody come up and say, well, you know, in September, you said in May, you were going to be covering this, and why aren't you? So that was a little uneasy, I know, I had a little trouble dealing with that, but gradually getting over it. I think that was about it. As far as some of the gifted students that we see, because I know we try and make sure that we cover all the students, not just make sure that we can support the students that need a luxury of help, but challenge those students that do excel. Now, this has been a little bit easier to accommodate in the high school, because, you know, pretty much every student has a different schedule, and if they're a little bit ahead in one subject, they can just make sure they're scheduled for another class. In the middle school, where you have the same kids in pretty much most of the same classes, it gets a little more difficult, because, you know, you have the resistance on the kid's part for wanting to move to the next grade. So if they're, for instance, wanted to take the next math course, instead of doing it in the seventh grade, they would end up moving to the eighth grade and being with a totally new group of kids, a group of students. And we have been able to do that, and we have two students who have been able to move from eighth grade and to take the high school geometry course with art, and that's worked out pretty well. We do have two students that are looking to move from seventh grade into an eighth grade class. So we are working with it, we're trying to make sure that we cover all the students and challenge all of them equally.
And we want to make a note, special note, too. We had someone who worked really hard with us for the gifted students, that was Mr. Gambasi. He hasn't been able to come this year, because he was newly married, and I guess it's taking up a lot of his time, so he's, he told us this year wasn't going to be, he couldn't make a commitment, but he's been wonderful. The students I've had that Mr. Gambasi has taught have just, they've been excellent students, they've really excelled, and he's really challenged them, so. And the two students Dan spoke right now, the eighth grade students, who I have in geometry, who are doing very well with Mr. Gambasi's students as well. Some of the present initiatives we have, I'm going to start with one that's really out of our purview and our domain, that's more with Scots, but the Everyday Math, because I'm very excited about that. Every place I've looked, I've spoken with lots of people, there's a lot of resistance by teachers, sometimes initially because of misunderstandings, I think, but every place that it's been implemented for any length of time, the results have been dramatic, and there've been great increases. And it's a different approach, there's a lot, but what's important is, I think in the old days, when you and I were growing up, you know, a lot of times you would cook with your mom, or you would work with your father, and parents are very busy these days, and sometimes people don't even do those things. So you have a lot of time, kids come into school, through no fault of anyone, without a certain base of knowledge. Everyday math helps to supply that experiential knowledge, which is so important for further understanding. And the spiraling approach is wonderful, because it's like you learn in, like in life, you learn something, then you may not see it for a while, but it comes back in a deeper way, and then several times, several repetitions, you find out that they do very well. There's a person in this district, she said I could use her name, and that was Nancy Downing, who works nearby, and she's very excited about it. She's actually worked with students from grades one through three, and seen just nothing but dramatic results. I mean, kids accomplishing things in grade three that normally weren't mastered until grade six. So she thinks it's going to be a great boon for the district, so. And along with that, one of the things that Kathy has implemented is reading and writing across the curriculum, which we're in very full support of, because reading, language, and mathematics all go very much together. They're based upon logic, and if you can't have, if you don't have a sense of logic, you have a lot of trouble doing mathematics. And so what we're really trying to do, we noticed some of our top students don't, simply don't even read directions, it's just because, you know, they probably haven't done so. So we're trying to be a little fastidious about that. We're also working in trying to have them analyze their thinking and actually write responses, and in geometry, you do the, you know, the dreaded proofs, but really, all a proof is, is a very detailed explanation of what you're doing, of how you came to a certain point. So we're having students try to write more than we ever have, and it's successful, because in order to do math, like in geometry, we have a lot of students who will say something, if it's a sunny day, then I will go to the beach. For some students, if you say, if I'll go to the beach, then it's a sunny day, they see no difference between the two. And it's important, if they're going to understand mathematics in a fundamental way, that they understand that, and that's why, as a district, I think we all need to work on those areas. At this point, I'll let Dan talk about technology and the applications of that.
Okay, some of the present technology that we're using, as far as the entire staff is, I think, being coming more comfortable with working with webpages. I know of a couple of staff members that are doing a lot more updates on their personal webpages for kids to access them both at school, to link them to important websites, or at home, if they need to do some homework, sometimes some of the websites can provide some very important information, and it's a really good resource. And thanks to the great work of the IT department, the servers have been much more reliable this year, which has also aided in the, more of the staff using the computers and relying on them. As far as some math department technology, I know the TIs, the TI's eighty-two, do we still use eighty-twos?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-threes? Okay. So we made it up to an eighty-threes and eighty-fours? The TIs are still very big. Where computers are becoming more and more powerful and less expensive, there are a lot of software out there that can do a lot of the stuff that those TIs can do. So you can, in most places, you can download some free software that does a lot of the graphing capabilities that TIs do, and most of the stuff is for free.
What does TI stand for?
The TI, well, the graphing calculators.
The graphing calculator.
Texas Instruments.
Texas Instruments.
Yeah, and the eighty-twos, eighty-threes are the different versions. I know I had an eighty-two right before I took the Praxis Two, and it died, so I had to learn how to do, how to work a ninety-five, which was pretty interesting, going halfway through the test and saying, I don't know where the button is. So the graphing calculators are still really big. It probably, they won't be phased out anytime soon, but the computers do aid in that a lot. The seventh grade has those laptops, which they got on a grant a few years ago, and I know they've been using that, and gradually putting it into their curriculum a little bit more. And the labs, we have a couple of computer labs, we have all the computers down in the library, and those are really useful, if you wanted to have every kid or every student at a different computer, and working individually on a certain program, and I know those get signed out a lot. And it's unfortunate, and we only have a couple, because it's really hard to get that time in there, so it gets pretty competitive. And then talk about some of our present real-world applications for the math. There was a couple, there was one competition put on by Bill Doucette, the TrigStar Competition, which is really good for the students to see that applying the math that they're learning in the classroom to outside of the school. So it's a lot of surveying and measuring the angles, and so that's really good for him to provide that competition. And Nancy Witterbaum, our school-to-career, has been good about really getting the students out and into the workforce, and seeing how the math is applied to certain jobs, so that they don't have to wait until they get into an internship after school, or until they get into a job, and say, oh, yeah, well, that algebra that I was supposed to learn, I guess I got to go back and relearn that. They can see right then that, okay, this is how it's going to get used, so I'll pay better attention to it, hopefully. As far as future initiatives, hopefully, when the new school comes through, we'll have a lot of new and better equipment to help the students learn math a little bit better. I know that computers is, again, going to be really big. There's a lot of programs out there, especially even on webpages. You go to any webpage, and they have a lot of Java applications, which are really good for showing the visual aspect of numbers and geometry, and how they're really dynamic, and it's really hard to get that from a textbook, because, you know, what's written on the page just stays there, and it doesn't move. And with the webpages, you can, you know, say, okay, I want you to look at this certain webpage, and it'll have an application that'll show a triangle, and you can click and drag a couple of angles and put them all together, and show how, no matter what the triangle looks like, it'll always add up to one hundred and eighty degrees. And so seeing that, and for them being able to actually move the angles and put them all together themselves, really does help, and it's a less expensive way to do manipulatives, so you don't have to, you know, get out of the car just for that one specific activity one time a year. So having the computers in the classroom would be huge, whether it's, you know, one for two students or one for five, and having those computer labs available to be signed out, and hopefully more than just two for the entire school. Okay, I forgot that. Another thing, in the classroom, would be really good to have, they have interactive whiteboards, I know one brand's the Smart Boards, and for the teacher to have that right there, so you have a digital projector hooked up to a computer that the instructor or the teacher is using, and to be able to display that. And it's not just a digital projector, where you just say, okay, look, everybody look at this, because you can get that type of stuff by just going to a lab and having everybody sign onto a computer and say, okay, everybody go to this page. With the interactive whiteboard, it's basically like combining a touchscreen with a digital projector. So you have all the students right there, and you can go over, you can touch, and you can move stuff around with just a finger. You can create a pen, and then write on there with your finger, save it. You can have it, for future reference, you can have it printed out and sent to students who maybe missed that day, or maybe they have trouble, you know, paying attention and taking notes at the same time, so you say, okay, you know, make sure you're paying attention, and I'll save a copy of this and give it to you after. So a lot of stuff in the classroom would be really useful, the interactive whiteboard, I'm kind of gunning for, it's a personal one of mine.
Is that in the recommendations? Is that in the task force recommendations?
Yes. As far as integrating curriculum, we talked a little bit about that with the curriculum mapping, and how that is going to aid things. As far as the new school setup, it would be very beneficial for integrating curriculum, not only to have more space, but also to have more time, and hopefully have more staff, so that you don't have just one prep, where you have to try and get all your grading and all your prep done, but you could also meet with other people, whether you do it as a team, so you can discuss projects that you might be able to do, like cross-curricular projects that the eighth grade is doing this year. So both time and space are really big concerns, as far as being able to do that integrated curriculum, and possibly offering some additional courses, if we have the staff to do a course setting that incorporates everything that most ninth graders would take, so it would incorporate something that they're learning in science, something that they're learning in math, something that they're learning in their language arts class, and the US history class, or their history class. So the space and the time are really big. As far as upcoming explorations, I know, right now, we're doing the TrigStar Competition, and the School-to-career are really good. As far as offering new stuff, the math team has been really big in the past, and I know with the limited amount of students that we have, and it's kind of fallen away, because those students that generally do, would do the math theme are busy doing, you know, everything else, all the other sports, all the other clubs that are offered, so hopefully we could get that back up and running. There's a math counts program that is run usually through UNH, so it'd be really good to get into that. And also, being an engineer myself, I've been kind of tossing around the idea of starting a young engineers' club, so incorporating both the sciences and the math in there, and getting the kids really interested and hooked that way. So that's about it.
So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer and entertain any.
Why is everybody looking at me? I know you're going to upgrade your geometry. In upgrading your geometry, can you give us an idea of what you're going to add new to it, in terms of levels, whether it's going to be the honors level, the next level, the next level?
What we have right now, we have a Level Four, which is a standard college preparatory course, and we have a Level Five, which is essentially our honors level. And the problem hasn't been there, the problem has been getting students into the geometry class, and that's what's happened. Once we get them in, what I would like to do is, I would like to perhaps have more of a division... Once we get them in, what I would like to do is I would like to perhaps have more of a division between the Level Fours and the Level Fives and the honors, which would be something that would be more rigorous, would perhaps be employing more logic, more, more truth tables, more, more proofs in that, so that the students who really are going into the math and science areas can get a, a higher level. But we first, the problem we're having doing that right now is because being a small school, we often have to have sometimes in the one class a Level Four and a Level Five students. And it's very difficult to find something that's broad enough to take them all. So what we've done is we're doing the McDougal to tell, which is, which is what Exeter uses for that same level. So, but once, if, if the, when the new school goes through and we have an increased enrollment, we hope maybe some other, other towns or another town would join in, then I think you could actually have isolated honors or Level Fives, where it would be solely just those students, and you could, you could really differentiate it in two levels. So that's our intent, is to just make it more rigorous once we get that.
In making it more rigorous, would you be using rotations and projections on the Cartesian plane at all, or?
Oh, yes. No, we would do that, absolutely, yes. Yeah, I think that's very important, because it's used in any kind of 3D representations in mathematics. It's used, it's actually on a lot of graphing calculators now, they do that type of thing. It's used in aviation, it's used all over, and I, I think it's very, very important. It's even, it's even tested somewhat on the state test. Not so much 3D, it's more in a plane, more two-dimensional, but 3D I think's a great idea, absolutely. And I think with those SmartBoards that Dan's talking about, you could actually get some, some representations, and the students could really see it very, very well. And I, no, I think it's a great idea.
How important would you, would you say it would be for our students in dealing with abstract versus concrete strategies in the classrooms, dealing not only with our honors students, but let's say down two levels, which would be students who would be wanting to go to college and compete?
I think it's very important, and I, and that's what our challenge is. I think with everyday math, we are gonna have students who come in, who are gonna be at a level where that's gonna be possible. I think in the past, we haven't, it's hard to take students, you have them at a certain level, like, one of the reasons proof in, in high school geometry, as Bendy emphasized, is there was a husband-wife team known as the Van Heelys in, in the Netherlands, who did this exhaustive study and showed developmentally, most high school students could not do a proof and understand it. They could just follow along and do a patterning, but they really didn't have a grasp. And for a long time, people thought, well, that's just simply because of the age, and they, I think they've watered the books down a little bit. But when in fact, I think later research has shown that isn't the case. It's simply the experiences haven't been provided all the way along the line to allow a student to reach that level of understanding, that developmental level before. And I think it's very possible. In the same way, you have students who can do, you know, right now, we're doing, students who are doing geometry in eighth grade and doing very well. I think that's very, very possible. And I think America needs to do that. I think a lot of, a lot across the world that's happening, and I think this country has to do it as well. But I think, as I said, I think the, the implementation of the everyday math, I think, is a, is a big, big benefit, I really do.
Could you explain how discrete math can, can aid our students in going to college and aid them in competing in college?
Yes, discrete math, in fact, uses, does a lot with permutations, a lot with probability, and a lot with what they call counting math. And so what it's really doing is it's employing pretty much data analysis, which is, in many ways, is probably more used right now than calculus is. More students, more, I mean, in the business world, for example, I'm sure people who are in the business world, you'd see more data analysis, you probably would hardly see a derivative or an integral, you know? But, but it's used a lot. And, I mean, it's even, they're even use matrices to, to simply store data and to manipulate data in the business world, you know, and it's used on, it's used on spreadsheets. So I think it's very, very important, and I think that's one area we need to, we need to work on, to be honest with you.
How much number theory can you get into our program?
I think we could do a lot more in number theory. Once we get, once we get the rigor back and we have, and we can actually differentiate the, the, you know, the honors from the rest of the class, I would like to see a lot of rigor, which would be a lot of, would be quite proof-intensive and get students ready to do, to major in mathematics in a theoretical way. Right now, I think the emphasis in most high schools, including ours, is more applied mathematics. And what you're talking about is more theoretical. And that's something I think we need to, the United States needs to work on. I think we could do it and should do it. It's not, I'm hopeful of that, in, in the not-too-distant future, we will be able to put some courses in like that.
How important is speed in mathematics?
Is what?
How important is speed?
Is speed? I, I think, I think speed in the sense of having an automaticity in terms of knowing certain facts is useful, but it's, I don't think it's nearly as important as understanding in depth. I've had some very bright students, for example, who really didn't know the multiplication tables. And I think they had a learning instability, and I, because it certainly wasn't because they weren't bright enough. So I think for the average student, it's a big boon to know, to know the number facts. But for a very bright student, sometimes it's not quite as, as important. So speed has never been that important to me. It wasn't important to Einstein and a lot of the things. I'd rather have someone think deeply and carefully rather than quickly.
So that would bring the abstract in?
Yes, the abstract, the abstract's much more important, because to think deeply, you're gonna be thinking abstractly, and more than likely, you're not gonna be thinking with, with great rapidity, yeah.
And how can this board help you to help our youngsters to compete much better, let's say, not only at the high school level, but the college level in, in mathematics?
Well, I think you're already started. I think, I think by supporting the everyday math, and I hate to keep getting back to that, but it does start from K, K-on. And by doing that, I think it's gonna be a tremendous help, I really do. I think you're gonna start seeing people, students coming into the middle school, all pretty much in this, having had the same experiences, all, all ready to go and to be able, and they will have had a lot of ex, a lot of work in, in informal algebra, but, you know, thinking through, with abstract concepts and, and using variables. And I, I think it's, once we reach that stage, it's just a matter of sitting down as a group and deciding where we would go and in terms of what course offerings. And that's pretty, what I often look for is I look to some, often the surrounding schools, the larger schools that are successful, Exeter, Phillips Exeter, Oyster River, places like that, Portsmouth, and see what they're doing. And also, I, I'm on a listserv with the State Board of Education, and we, we get a lot of information about curriculum from them, from Tim Kuritz, and so, Rich Andras. But I, I think you've been very supportive. I think this has been, I'm not saying it to try to make people feel good, it's been a very good board, I think. Yeah, I'm really happy with it. And I'm very supportive too, I wanna say this while she's here, but Superintendent Murphy, I think, has done, has pushed some great initiatives. And I'm, I'm saying that sincerely. I think it's been really helpful and so good for the school district. I feel like things are really moving, yeah.
Have you done any follow-up on how our students are doing, let's say, the last five years?
Yes, only anecdotally, but very well. For example, I mean, I'm not sure if I should name names, but we have two students who are now seniors at UNH, majoring in math. One of them, I think, has a B+, and one had an A-, and the rest, they have straight As in every subject. Another student is at Northeastern, majoring in Spanish, and, but she's an excellent math student, and she has, I think, just about a four-oh. Another student's at Simmons, she's near the top of her class. So I think we've done really well with our upper-level students. But I agree with you, I think we can do even better. And I think as, as we, as we get to the capabilities where we can do that, I'd like to put in even stricter, you know, math. One of the, one of the complaints I got from some professors at UNH was not directed at Newmarket, but in general, he's saying that any person who went on for a doctorate in mathematics always went and applied math from UNH. They almost never had someone in, in pure mathematics. And that's what you're talking about, exactly. And I, and I don't see any reason why we can't do that, and I don't see why we can't compete internationally.
I don't either.
It's a matter of the will, that's all.
We have some excellent students here at Newmarket.
We absolutely do, and, and really good students. So, thank, any other questions, or? Yes, Jonathan?
I'm, I'm assuming that, that for those folks at home and parents who are curious about the curriculum, that they can go to our website and?
Yes.
The courses are laid out, I know what, what's covered, they can get a bit of a feel for that as they wanna drill down and?
They can, and they, and I, I'd welcome them to contact me, you know, as well, and I would definitely get right back to them, sure.
That sounds great.
I'd love that.
Other questions, comments? Thank you so much for coming in.
Well, thank you for having us, it's really been a?
For these handouts, for the tunes. You don't usually expect that when you're gonna be, uh, uh, gonna hear a math presentation. Very creative.
I tried to get Dan to dance, but he wouldn't do it, he, he can, right? Yeah, but thank you very much for having us, it was a real, genuine pleasure.
Thank you, thank you so much.
A little more singing and dancing probably would liven up the mood. Some, some, some interpretive dance, maybe.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. You're taking my lines now. Moving right along. I think, uh, next on, up on the agenda, Randy, if you would. Now, now there's some, some real pressure on here in terms of the song and dance aspects of this.
You don't want me singing and dancing? Thanks for letting me speak. I was asked to address you on staying up in the Class M sports area. The NHIA and the Hampshire Interschool Athletic Association has a two-year cycle where the classification committee takes our numbers and it puts us in classes. Well, this year, we fell at three forty-eight when numbers were due. Three fifty was the cutoff to stay in Class M, which puts us in Class S, the smallest division in the state. What I'm here to ask you to do is to allow us to petition up and stay in Class M, where we've been in most sports for forty-plus years. I know back in the early fifties, we were S. Around sixty, sixty-one, we petitioned up to M. We've been in M except for a few sports here and there. Reasons being is I've talked to past and present coaches and players. I think a lot to do with pride, it's healthy competition. And we've always been Class M. And I think the townspeople, a lot of my friends, used to play here, plays in school today. My own players wanna stay in Class M. It's also cost-effective, we go to Class S for the travel, which means bigger bus bills. Hourly wage goes up for the drivers, kids are leaving school even earlier for events. Our numbers will fluctuate up and down every two years. So next year, say, if we stay Class S, we go to Class, say, with three fifty-five, in two more years, we have to be in Class M, there's no, there's, there's nothing, nothing we can do about it, you can't petition down. And what it does is, it creates problems with the scheduling. Like, we had two schools come in, Somersworth and Raymond, last, last year, and now they're traveling everywhere, because we have to readjust all our schedules, because when I go to scheduling meetings, it's more of a flip-flop. The schedules are set, and right now, we don't travel that far, because they came in. But now Somersworth is traveling from Somersworth, Hampshire to Conet, which is Jaffrey, New Hampshire, two and a half, three hours away for them. We lose our consistency in rival, rivalries. The kids develop some good, what is the word I'm looking for? Relationships with kids from other communities. They play against them from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade right up through. I personally have players who, we go to Epping High School. They're out there hugging before the game and stuff like that, because they've seen friends they haven't seen in a while. So to, to keep it short, is I'm just asking for us to allow us to stay in Class M, to petition up. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to field them.
Questions, comments on this?
Oh, you said a cutoff is three fifty?
Yeah, we were at three forty-eight when I believe when we turned the numbers.
Thirty-nine now, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, three forty-nine.
I'm, I'm in complete favor of staying in Class M.
And I believe, may, after the next two-year cycle, is they might, they're talking the state's going to five divisions. So right now, we're in four, they might be going to five.
What's the maximum in Class M?
Uh, six hundred.
Six hundred.
Right, we're, we're on the low end. We actually have some schools that, well, last year were bigger than us that were playing Class S, but we, we compete very well. I mean, in the two thousands alone, we've had, what, three or four state championships since ninety-eight?
Uh, I did a little research, I looked at the banners of the gym. In the last ten years, we've had two baseball championships, one golf, one softball. We've had a runner-up in softball, we had four runners-up in cross-country. And in addition, what Randy mentioned about the relationships and so forth, don't forget those two big green and white banners for sportsmanship. Obviously, we're highly regarded by our peers in Class M as well, like, that's a very important consideration.
Yeah, I think we need a motion for this. Can we get a motion to, to petition up to Class M?
I'd like to make a motion that we, we petition to stay in Class M.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discuss, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, we are ready for some committee reports. Chris, are you awake enough to give us a school facilities committee report?
I'm doing some, sketching out some school designs here, so. We got the task force's reports back, they came into the superintendent's office in timely fashion, by and large. We are, as a group, supposed to be reviewing them, this is the school facilities committee, and getting together, I think, on Tuesday to start reviewing them and seeing where we can integrate things, where common themes are, and just trying to identify the very key issues for the architect to start working on, so that we can come to the board with a, with, you know, with a coherent recommendation. I'm personally reading through the reports in batches of two and three, because some of them are just extremely comprehensive, and every one of them is just a great piece of work. We're very, very grateful for the hard work and dedication that went into these reports. Everybody clearly took the, took the task very, very seriously. There were many school visits by the individual task forces, a lot of research done. And so I, I think it puts a heavy burden on us to really justify the, the investment that these folks have made. And so we are taking our time and reading through them. Some of the, they're all going in their raw form over to the design team, but at the same time, we're also, as I say, working, working through them. So I guess the task of the facilities committee is to take the recommendations, start working on them on the eighth, and then be prepared to come to the school board on what would be the seventeenth. With some, with some, with something, so that you can, so that we can take action to have the design team start working up a design, some numbers. Start putting some, some meat on the bones of what we have, so that we can roll this process ahead. One thing in particular, I'm going to, I hate to single out anybody, but I, I think it's important and appropriate in this case. The infrastructure task force gave a very, very detailed and comprehensive report with more than three hundred pages of backup materials related to the use of green technology and energy-saving measures in building design in general and school design in particular, which is just a magnificent piece of work. I wouldn't even know where to begin summarizing it, I think we're just gonna turn that right over to Dan. The design team has hired, has retained an engineering firm from Keene called Kohler and Lewis, who specializes in green building design. They did the mechanical engineering at the Society for Protection in the Hampshire Forest Building, which is an award-winning building for, meets the LEED gold standard. It's a incredibly efficient design. And so we're very excited to be able to integrate some of these things into, into our school design, partly because being environmentally conscious is a good thing, and partly also because it's just good business, because it saves you money in the long run if you reduce your energy costs. So, that is basically where we're at. The, the school board should be looking for something on the seventeenth, and I encourage folks, I don't discourage any member of the school board from picking up these reports and start reading through them yourself. I think you, I think you'll, you'll see that we've, we, we really owe a debt of gratitude to, to the folks who work so hard on these things.
Thank you so much. Lynda, you, would you care to comment? Linda, you, would you care to comment on the health?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not done.
I'm not done. Because it wouldn't be fair if I didn't also mention that the advocacy task force has been out there, um, starting to beat the pavement. Some people may have noticed the sign. That's at the intersection of Grant Road and Hilton Drive. We had some volunteers down at Houghton's Hardware over the weekend, just handing out pamphlets. We have a new pamphlet. I don't have an example here. We have some students, James Rosa and Laura Hackney, and a few other students who are going around talking to their, to their fellow students about, uh, school, about the, uh, new school. It's not something they're being asked or required to do. It's something they wanna do. And they're doing it, taking the initiative, which I think is fantastic. And, uh, the New Market Wins website has been completely redesigned and updated, and it's really a great, great product. And I encourage people to go to it. That's newmarketwins.org. To, uh, check out the, um, latest and greatest information. The advocacy group has got T-shirts which say, "I'll Be There," 31406 on the back, and, uh, some appropriate design on the front. And we're having buttons made that say, "Support Our Schools," or something to that effect. And when I say "we," I mean the advocacy task force. And, uh, New Market Wins is, um, funding this out of private funds, not out of public money. So, there's a lot of stuff going on, and a lot of people are working very hard.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry. I would've been remiss if I didn't mention that. So, I apologize.
The Health Benefits Review Committee?
Yes. We met on Tuesday and had a presentation from, is it Local Government Center, LGC?
Yes.
And they, they presented, um, they, they partner with Blue Shield. And they gave us a presentation. And basically, what, what's gonna happen is we're having presentations from three different providers come to us, explain, um, what, uh, what they offer. And then, uh, after those presentations, we'll have, Sue will put a spreadsheet together for us when we get costs from, um, from all of these vendors as well. And we'll compare the, you know, the coverage that is offered, the benefits that are offered, and, and the price. So, um, we're hoping by early December that we'll have bids from the three different, um, providers that are presenting to us. We have, our next presentation is next Tuesday morning. And, uh, so, so after Tuesday, we'll have had the three presentations. Is that correct?
No.
No, no. Next, next Tuesday is actually, I think, the, uh, the Granite Group, which is, uh, the folks who, you know, the other part of this, if I can just jump in here for a second, Linda, is, uh, it's become clear that, that, uh, the rising cost of health insurance, as pretty much everybody in the community knows, is one of those things that seems to be a little bit out of control. When we started tonight's meeting off, we talked about our, um, our resolution with respect to the State School Board's Assembly, encouraging the legislature to focus on the issue of rising healthcare costs and its impact on the schools. And, uh, and, uh, this committee realizes that in addition to reviewing what are the different choices and options and costs out there on behalf of the district, we feel that it's important to educate people about this, what's seen by many people as an impending healthcare crisis related to the cost of healthcare and health insurance. And the group that's coming in next week is gonna, I think, offer us some ideas about how we can raise, uh, awareness of this issue within the district, you know, in tandem with giving people, uh, more information about the cost of healthcare and its implications for the district. So, it's, we got, the, the third group is scheduled further down the road.
We haven't scheduled that yet, but that would be.
Right. But, but, but this one is more about the, the educational component to raise awareness within, uh, our employee base and, and the community at large about this issue.
And that, and that is something that we, we spend, been spending a lot of time talking about as well. That communication piece, that education piece. And we're, um, you know, we're, we're exploring ideas in terms of the, the best way to communicate this information with, with the community at large and with the, um, with the teaching staff. And I, I guess that pretty much covers it.
Great. Thank you so much. Chad, anything from the policy committee?
We're gonna have to pass this.
Okay. I, I know that we did a ton in the last go-round, and there were some reworks that are in the works. And, uh, and maybe we'll hear from, from you guys again on that. Okay? Anything on the Seacoast School of Technology?
Let me give you a little bit of updating on what's happening over there.
Great.
The SST governing board did meet October 31st of this year, upon which there were discussions on a regional calendar for 2006 and 2007. And also, the, uh, an SST driving policy, which we're gonna talk about more here with this board, and also deal with the policy involving the driving, driving to there with certain aspects.
Great.
The, um, also, the renovation process of the center itself, and I'll get more into that in a minute. They also talked about an upgrade, a report on enrollment, and a budget was presented. In terms of enrollment, New Market has 41 students at this time, uh, in the, this semester, attending SST. And next semester, they'll have forty-three. There are 557 students attending SST from the, from the surrounding schools. The governing board was presented with the renovation program committee's reports, and I'll go into some of those reports real quickly. The, um, the renovation program committee reports from the current process also include studying student slash parent survey developments, implemented in, uh, correlated labor surveys, and we also have the pre-engineering committee appointed. To be announced will be new programs, recommendations, and advisory committees created for new programs. And also, um, a refinement of space-dash-equipped needs by each current program. You should note that this particular committee went through all the programs and had these people come before us. This is like 1 o'clock in the afternoon where this committee met. There was 22 of us. Upon which we actually drilled these people in terms of what they have, what they need, and what we're gonna have in the future and so forth. So, it's quite extensive. At this time, the architect has drawn a preliminary plan to be reviewed by the Seacoast School of Technology governing board, the principals advisory team, and also the exeter co-op board and staff. The total cost need to be determined, and an SST building committee needs to be appointed this time. So, where we are right now, I think we'll meet next week with this committee. And what we're gonna start doing is rounding up and determining the programs that will be brought forward. And the current programs will also be, um, which have been reviewed, and it'll be determined how they're gonna be expanded and, and not only in terms of content, but also space needs.
Great. Thank you. Questions for, uh, for Chad? Comments on the SST? Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Let's, uh, let's go on to the business department update. I know we were gonna talk about the firehouse sale. We gave a little extra time to the community to weigh in regarding, uh, the offer that we have on the table and, and, uh, I don't know, has there been any new, uh, comments or, or any other reactions? We, we sort of deliberately left it open for a little bit.
We received several, um, messages from the community.
Yeah.
And in both cases, they, uh, strongly, and I mean strongly, urged you to dispose of the property.
Oh, okay. So, there wasn't?
With great haste, move forward and put this money into use as you determine. And, and, as you know, it's going to go into the capital reserve account.
Absolutely.
I have a motion. If you're prepared to hear it. It's up to you.
Give me a moment here. Any other, any other information that's occurred? I mean, other, any other community input? I mean, Linda, you would, you would really kind of strongly wanted to give an extra opportunity to this. And if the only input we've gotten is, "Let's go forward," okay. Let's, uh, you wanna make a motion on this, Chris?
I moved that we authorize the superintendent to take all steps necessary to liquidate the, um, firehouse building for the highest price currently on offer.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on this?
Is that adequate for your purposes?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Budget?
Just to let you know, Susan's already been in contact with our legal counsel and, um, has, will be drawing up the necessary agreements you'll obviously need to sign off and all that. But that's, she's already conferred with them and is ready to move on that.
Great. Super. Thank you. You wanna move on to the budget, Sue?
Actually, I'll cast these down. There's two, these state books. There's one of these. Two, two. These two sheets. Take two. You'll need that. It's actually two sheets. What I did was I just, um, put together a spreadsheet of what we discussed at our last two sessions to kind of show you the changes that we kind of, sort of agreed on and a couple we hadn't decided on. And then the second sheet is something that Scott prepared. You had a question last week about capital improvements.
Yep.
Okay.
So, basically, what I did is I just, when you get your budget books, there were some things that we discussed that, "Well, I need to change that." We agreed on making some changes. So, those are the changes. The original on your copy, which was issued on September 29th. And as of tonight, I've made these changes. And when you get your final copy, you'll see those changes. So, for instance, on page one in the substitute account, the original amount was 32,000, and I adjusted it to 30. So, that's, and you'll see the difference is $2,000. So, that's what I did on all of those areas we discussed. The ones that we didn't decide on and we were gonna kind of leave open, um, building repairs at the elementary school. There was some discussion about the intercom and whether or not that was what. So, Scott put together a spreadsheet of, I believe, yes, he put that it's prioritized list based with greatest need.
Yes.
So, that's...
And these are, this particular, okay, let me just, let me just go through this one more time so that I have, I mean, it's numbers, you know? I'm, I'm one of those math-challenged people that, uh...
I am a, I am a former. I can hear you say that.
I'm a former student of art, so...
Yeah, I'm not, you see, and I am not a former student of, of art, so I, 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 I get to say these kind of things. You know, my kids don't get to say this stuff.
Right.
So, what we're looking at here on this first sheet is, these are just the changes and corrections.
Right.
And includes some, and there were a couple of typos and some other things that have been adjusted as well as the things that we discussed in terms of, of, uh, changes that we thought would be appropriate going forward.
The question marks. What, how do we wanna proceed with those changes?
Okay. The question marks at the bottom are the issues related to building repairs, maintenance, electricity, the fuel-oil question, rental equipment, and, and other kinds of things. So, tonight, we wanna try to, uh, get some crude determination on some of these so that we can go forward for the next go-round.
Well, you know, we have another meeting next week.
I know.
What I wanted to do was give you this information so that you could look at it. If you have some definite ideas on what you wanna do with them, I can move forward. But keep in mind, our meeting next week, again, is a work session.
Right.
We finalize, more or less, and then we present to the budget committee on the 15th. We hand them their books with our numbers. So, you can certainly think about them, or we can make a decision now. Some of the ones that I still don't have a firm hold on are, like, electricity.
Are we likely in the next week to get a better handle on some of these things?
I consulted with a couple of people. What I did was, I, I have numbers of the last five years, what we've used. I'm just kind of waiting for one source to give me an idea of where we might be. I hear 60% increase. I hear 10%. I, I, I'm a little unsure on where to go with electricity, so I just wanted a little more time to kind of come to some conclusion as to how I might project that cost. We all know that's going up. I don't know.
Right. And the same thing is obviously true with fuel-oil.
Well...
Gauging fuel-oil a year or so down the road. I mean, if you can figure that one out, boy!
I did leave a message for our current supplier, and he wasn't available. He hasn't gotten back to me. And I asked him if he could look into his crystal ball and give me some idea of what we might expect for a cost per gallon.
Okay.
I do know, I did do some research on that. I have a five-year average of what we used at both buildings. So, I'm using those numbers to project what we would use in gallons. I'm just trying to come up with what he thinks would be reasonable. Someone said $3. I thought that was a little high. I was sort of at the 225, but then I wanted to get some,
Okay.
Something from him to give me a little guidance. So, I will have those for you next week in your budget.
Okay.
But I just wanted you to know that I haven't done anything with those prior to what you already have.
Super. So...
We're being very cautious with this, Jonathan, because there are some school districts right now that have budgets frozen, not spending any, anything in any accounts that isn't absolutely mandatory, and we just don't wanna be in that position. We have, as you know, a relatively lean budget, so it's really important that Sue and I nail this number down so that we don't get caught short. But it's been tough because you get a different opinion whoever you call. We did have Public Service in this week. Clay Mitchell, our, uh, town planner, was involved and invited a, a team from Public Service walked through the high school, looking at areas that we can continue to improve and be more efficient in terms of our electrical use. They also indicated to us that they were very, um, interested in helping us as we move forward with any project in ways in which they can help us to save money. So...
I got a call at work from, from somebody from PSNH who wanted to talk about that.
Well, we met with them this week, a group of them, and they were very helpful. As you know, we've been doing that. Replacing lamps in gymnasiums and, um, putting in efficient, um, lighting. But this is still a tough one to call, so...
Well, so for this budget update sheet, basically, the goal for tonight is, is to give us an awareness of what's coming up next week. Give us with the question marks areas for us to give some thought to, which will have some greater guidance for us next week in our work session. And then the other thing is for us to take a look at the recommendations that Scott Thompson had for us regarding, uh, our last work session so that we can kind of make next week's process smooth, very smooth and quickly because, you know, we're turning this soon over to the budget committee.
We don't anticipate that your meeting next week is going to be long and drawn out. You've gone through the budget.
Yeah.
You've made the recommendations. We, we just wanna make sure this is what your intention was. And then we'll put this back to press and get these materials ready for the New Market Budget Committee for the 15th. So, we have a very tight, um, schedule also.
Now, Sue, you have here painted trim at the high school. Is that a question mark? Is that gonna be something?
I'm waiting for an estimate on that. We had someone come and look at it, and that was, I think, an area, I'm not sure. Someone brought that up, that, you know, it's looking pretty ragged. So, how much would it cost?
It doesn't look good at all, and it takes away from the beauty of the building and the windows outside. So, we've asked a company that's done a lot of work for us to give us a estimate. And you know what trim I'm talking about? The outside, all along the brick, uh, needs to be scraped and then painted. It's not just a matter of painting. It has to be scraped first and then painted.
Okay, so, can, uh, you know, I just wanna make sure. Okay, so I, I understand, you know, we've got the page numbers, um, the difference. So, the difference is total a negative 28, 588.
Right.
What is this 929 additional, 414?
That was what you would see on your, if you were to look at the back page of your budget, the difference between column one and column two. That's what the increase would have been, but now it has been brought down to 385.
Okay, okay.
Before we put in anything for health insurance, before we talk about any of those extras that...
The other thing too, I, I see that you, um, that you figured health at 15% and 25. Didn't we, didn't we decide we were gonna go with 20? Didn't we say?
I've got that, and I see that there.
Yes, yes.
So, I can put a 20 in there. Sue and I talked about that.
In between those.
And Sue said, "Well, should we put a 20 in?" And I said, "Well, it's just in the middle between 15 and 25." So, I mean, you can kind of figure out what it would be.
Well, when you're, when you're putting the budget together, I think that's what we all agree.
We agreed that the 20... The 20% number was where we wanted to go with that for now.
And, um, the question mark on rental equipment?
Oh, that was, um, during our conversation, we have that large storage trailer out back. And I believe someone was gonna give me some figures on what it would cost to buy that, and I... and I didn't get that, so I need to do a little more research on that.
Skip, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Rather than rent it, just buy it outright.
And so, it, it, we're likely to have some more info on this and some adjustments on this, which will translate, at least next week, into, uh, a crude figure for percentage increase that we can at least begin to work with in our own minds for this upcoming budget. Is that-
That's correct.
That accurate?
Just know that right now, without health insurance, you're talking about an, you know, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase.
And it's on a-
On an eleven million dollar budget.
By budget.
The other, the other thing that we didn't discuss, that I, I see here on the sheet, is the Maintenance Director.
Right.
We never ta- we never did, we talked about that, and-
We need to talk about that.
We need to talk about that.
That, that is not included in that three eighty-five.
No, it's not.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so-
But we would like to talk to you, um, about the role and the responsibilities, um, in terms of that position for the district, how that could be cost-effective in the long run. But we, we're most anxious to hear your thoughts on that.
Okay.
Okay, so, and, and in terms of this, um, the list that we got from Scott about the, um, capital improvement?
Yeah, this, this list, you may recall, when we were talking about this in the last go-round, initially, there, there had been a thirty thousand dollar item for an intercom system that was actually, uh, historically, it was something that Scott, as the new principal, kind of inherited as part of the historical plan, and, uh, there'd been some repairs to the existing system this year, and, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about, was that the best way to spend that money, and we asked him to, to give a little bit of thought, to say if we had that in the budget, were there other pressing needs? And we asked him to go back and, and drill down on what he thought, uh, 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 you know, would be the best optimal use of those resources, should they be approved in the budget. And what we've got here is a list in order of priority of things that he feels with, with a second looksee, of things that, you know, uh, uh, based on his opinion, that we, we ought to be considering for this budget. And, and in looking at it, things like the motors and bearings for the air, you know, the HVAC units, uh, you know, these are some things that we, from a maintenance standpoint, uh, uh, it seems to me, um, uh, are, are fairly significant, the air conditioning for the computer labs to keep the computers up, the idea of lighting. I hear nothing but people complain about outside lighting, about, you know, the elementary school, particularly, you know, before we get to, uh, daylight savings time. There's a, there's a little bit of time during the course of the year where, uh, we could have a little bit better lighting. I mean, uh, uh, some of the things about, uh, cleanliness in the bathrooms and, and, uh, the cafeteria tables. So, you know, we, we may wanna just drill down a little bit. Uh, uh, I, I was actually surprised, 'cause he went well beyond the money that we had talked about, as he's beginning to develop a capital improvement plan, that the original thing that had been in the historical plan wasn't even on the list.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad we asked him to take some time to give this some extra thought, and I, and I think for, for us, the challenge will be to read up, read this over, and next week at our next work session, for us to kind of say, "Okay, what are these things, you know, in our judgment, based on his input, are the things that we wanna put into the budget?" And, uh, you know, for the elementary school and its ongoing maintenance. I mean, that's really what I see this as. This is not, it's not so much for us to make a decision about it here and now, tonight, but to, to, you know, have the info to consider and mull on, uh, for our, our next work session on this. So, there questions about, about this?
Uh, yeah, um, we, we're missing a copy here.
Oh, uh, what, what are you missing a copy of?
Both.
Oh, you didn't get-
Here you go. Why don't you take that one down there, okay?
You get the other one either.
You didn't, you didn't get this one either?
No.
Right, okay.
We're sure of a copy.
Why don't you guys take that? I'll get one and another-
Right here, we have plenty.
Oh, you've got plenty, okay, great, thank you. That's no problem.
You got them both now?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Super. Well, okay, this is, uh, this is great. This is really helpful. I think it's gonna make the next meeting on this go faster, and it gives us some things to mull, uh, mull over in the, in the, in the interim. Okay, um, we have a nomination to consider?
Yes, um, I'm pleased to, uh, place the name of Jody Adewaka, uh, in nomination for the kindergarten position at the elementary school. Uh, you have in front of you the nomination sheet developed by Mr. Thompson, and, um, with all the relative information regarding her, Jody will be taking the position that was, um, when Mrs. Mascola resigned.
I'll make a motion to accept Jody Adewaka as our new kindergarten teacher. This is immediately, right?
Um, she's scheduled to start November seventh.
November seventh, okay, as of November seventh.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, let's see, manifest for November, is there, do we have a?
We do.
Oh, right.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept the manifest total for this period, with a sum of five hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and two cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have action items, and-
Yeah.
Okay. Here, can we, we send this down for the minutes? Thank you. Let's do a little- What are we looking at here on action items?
Um, I'd ask that you, um, I could schedule out the special education presentation. Elaine's anxious to come in, and, um, especially, I would have loved to have had her in this week, but we had other items on the agenda, but we just got notice from the State Department of Ed that a grant that she wrote with Mrs. Graham was awarded to New Market for fifty thousand dollars.
Great.
For a project around one of our major goals, literacy. So, uh, Elaine was very excited, the whole administrative team was very excited, and so there's some wonderful work being done in that department. But your schedules have been pretty busy with, um, programs and, uh, committee responsibilities, so, uh, I'll sca- we have a schedule for November, but obviously, we'll have to wait maybe December. Okay?
Okay. Okay.
We're still waiting for, um, some documentation from the state for the, uh, salary survey?
Yeah, I haven't received anything. I don't know, maybe they're not doing one this year. Um, Jonathan, you're going to that workshop, right? Hampshire School Boards?
Yes, the, uh, the seventeenth one.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, is it the eighteenth? Am I the only one who's going to this?
Yeah, I think you are.
Okay, I figured I would-
I think it will be very, it will be a wonderful day. I just, I haven't received anything, so, to answer your question, Cliff, I sort of haven't had a chance to do much about that.
Now, that comes from, is it from-
Hampshire School Boards Association.
School Boards Association. You know, Chris, that, they're gonna be very prominent on Saturday. Ted is the head person on that. If you get a chance to, uh, uh, you know, encourage him about that salary piece, it's one of the things that we use on a, on a variety of fronts around here. That would be, uh, that would be helpful.
They may even have it available that day, Chris. I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they might have manuals. They usually bring samples of stuff that, uh, to that assembly, the, of what the School Boards Association provides.
I'll ask Ted.
Thank you.
And I'm sure his response will be, "Moving right along."
Okay. Um-
Moving right along.
Great. Are we still on, on track for our, uh, our draft of the strategic plan?
Um, that's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we're meeting this, next week on Thursday. Uh, we have a team of, of teachers and representation across the district.